We'll call the meeting to order. On roll call, we have everybody here tonight. So that's nice. Welcome, everybody. Additions to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. I have to tell you, I like that, too. I was complimenting earlier on the me- on agendas. I need a motion to approve the agenda?
We'd love to approve the agenda.
I have a motion from Cheryl, a second from Rick. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carrie? Anybody for public comment?
I have none.
Nobody's here, okay? I didn't mean nobody's here. Yep. Then we have the consent agenda. So we have the February 26th and the March 12th minutes. We have bills, student activity, and wire transfers. So I think everything we have. Cheryl, did you have a comment on bills?
I had a chance to go in and check through the bills. I didn't see anything worth commenting on. It was pretty much business as normal.
Okay. And anything left?
No, I just want-
Student activities, it all looks really straightforward.
I just want to talk about student activity accounts a little bit. I don't know if you want to do that after you approve the consent agenda or before. I'll talk about it now.
Before.
Okay. So we are going to be moving to the process where student activity accounts are going to go under board control. It's an auditor issue that's coming forward. And so basically, right now, the way student activity accounts are set up, there's this rather large, extensive manual for them. And then for deposits or expenditures out of those accounts, you need an advisor signature, you need a student leader signature before there can be any checks written. So nothing's going to change with the actual contents of the manual. So what's defined as how we can spend student activity dollars is the same whether it's under board control or whether it isn't. What's going to be different, though, is rather than in the future seeing student activity accounts as a separate item, it's going to be right in with the bills and everything. And we can still delineate it out and sort it by student activity account activity, but each month then, the board's just going to be approving student activity accounts, whether it be deposits, expenditures, you name it. I know right now Carrie's in the process of working on that. I don't know if her intent is to just wait until July 1st to implement it, or if come May 1st or something, if she is going to be ready to go to just start that. But I just want the board to know it's coming. It's really starting at the auditor level, and there's just auditor implications if we continue operating like we are. So my recommendation, Carrie's recommendation, is let's just put those under board control, and then we can continue as close to how we're currently operating. So just an FYI on student activity accounts up to this point, it shouldn't look the same as it always has.
It's not going to mix with the bills, though. It'll be- so none of us have seen that, at least for me, on the board. We had almost a hands-off thing on that for years.
On the student activity accounts?
Yeah, we didn't have any idea what was in it. But we were responsible according to the auditors. It was a-
Do other schools do that as well? Have that under board control?
I think it's kind of a mix. The districts that I've been in right now are operating like Painesville is. I know that most districts are making the transition this spring to have those student activity accounts go under board control. So I'm pretty certain it's almost all the auditors that are doing public schools in the state are delivering the message. You need to either get these under board control, or you need to have these checks and balances, safeguards in place. And so most districts, especially districts our size, are saying it's just going to be a board control issue, and then those things will be in front of you each month.
I was always worried about those. I felt something- if something might go wrong, hopefully it never would. We're responsible, and we never saw them before.
Yeah.
It was the craziest thing ever.
Well, and there's some districts that have, you know, significant dollars that go in and out of those on an annual basis and stuff. I wouldn't necessarily classify Painesville as that large of an entity when it comes to those revenues and expenditures, but still, it's dollars in and dollars out, which it should be. That's the intent of those student activity accounts. That's all. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware. If we implement before July 1st, you'll get more information on it, but otherwise, just be prepared come July 1st that it's going to look a little different.
As treasurer, I did look at those accounts. Even though we weren't in charge of them, they were still in a separate account next to the bills, and I had to pay for work. So I was able to look at them.
Yeah. Well, for me, it'll be the first time we see them when they start showing up here. But I think it's a good deal. Anyway, any other comments on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion be approved.
I have a motion from Rick, a second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carrie? Okay. Then we are now on communication items. So I guess, Minister, we'll go to Matt.
Yep, I just have a couple of items, just so everyone's aware. I know that the custodians are upset that they haven't been able to blow snow, push snow, or shovel snow in, what, 14 days or so? So it's- I don't know what they're going to do. They're actually- you see them back to kind of their regular schedule. This is kind of odd. It's been a while. But it's hard to believe, you know, I drove by a bunch of the fields and stuff today. It's just amazing where it's all going, and it's- spring activities are going to be here, and that's refreshing. Start of fourth quarter, so that means three are down, one to go. The busy time of the year is coming. Couple things I just want the board to be aware of. There is a referendum workshop that is scheduled for April. I can email the date out to people, but I have registered for it. I was planning on attending, and it's kind of like the referendum 101, but also kind of some keys to referendum success and those type of things. So it's down in the cities. I know it's a Friday in April. I'll send that out if there are board members that would want to join me down at that. You're more than welcome, too. Just let me know via email on that, and I'll get you registered. April 16th, city council is actually operating a, what they're calling a, city council slash community work session. And one of the things that they would like is they would like the school to attend, and they have asked if I could attend and if a board member would join me. They want to talk about kind of what the different entities in the city of Painesville and the surrounding area have going on, if there's projects coming up, kind of a collaborative time for multiple agencies to be able to visit with each other, to talk about kind of what's on the agenda, where these groups are going, and if there's maybe common links or threads that we could work collaboratively to forward the progress versus kind of working in your own silo and stuff. So that's March 16th. Again, I will probably-
April 16th?
Or, excuse me, April 16th, thank you. That's April 16th. And if it's okay with the board, I will just probably email that to Bruce, and then we can kind of work out what that looks like.
You know what time of day that'll be?
Give me just a second. 5:00 to 6:00 PM. But if we could get one board member for sure, and even if there were two board members, that would be great. I don't feel like it's something that the entire board needs to attend, but if a couple would be willing to go, that would be great. Otherwise, you know, we're continuing to work on the plan for 1920 as far as budget is concerned. We're going to talk a little bit more about that tonight. And yeah, it's fourth quarter. It's hard to believe where the school year's going. So that's what I have. If there are questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. No questions, we'll move to committee and organizational reports. Anything on community? So are these going to be on here, Matt, if there wasn't a meeting between last time and this time, or are they going to be on there all time?
Nope. So what I'm trying to do is when I put these on here, I'm trying to just review the month calendar and just put on the ones that are there.
So all of these are active at the moment?
Yeah. So if I have missed somebody, though, please speak up. It is not my intention to omit somebody, but this is when I reviewed my calendar, what I had. But again, I could very well overlook something, so please speak up. But I will put on what's on my calendar.
Okay. So first, we have the community education advisory.
Negotiations. Or is this new?
Well, I'd say community education first.
Okay.
Yeah. I put them in alphabetical order, my-
Okay.
So go ahead with community education advisory.
So unfortunately, I don't have any assignments.
Sorry, that's me.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't have my notes from it, but maybe Matt's got something important that happened, but Matt Dickhausen just went over some of the numbers for enrollment and some of the numbers from the past year, and on track for, I mean, everything seems not just okay, but there is some crazy cool stuff going on that he's helping head up. And the one that sticks out to me is the same we're talking about. A student from another district that is unable to use her arms to put her hearing aid in and reached out to the district and the major space and the students to see if they could come up with something with 3D printers and come up with some sort of device. She had things to put her makeup on and everything, but she couldn't- she can't bend her arms, so she couldn't get her hearing aid in. So they're working on that, just stuff like that, that I'm like, that is, that's what I like to hear, well, and so that's exciting.
Good. Anything from you, Erin?
No, I would agree. It was pretty much just an update from Matt, and a little brainstorming on possible new offerings coming up, but it was just kind of Matt keeping the group in the loop, so to speak, so it was good.
Okay. Then next is district-wide staff development.
That would be me. And it's a monthly meeting, so most of the stuff is just repetitive, but there are a couple of our teachers that are going to do the Fond du Lac math camp and seminar. That sounded like a really cool thing. We had a detailed discussion of the pros and cons in how beneficial personalized professional development will be, and the concerns of some of the teachers about how it's going to be run and tracked, and they came up with a plan for that. And it's going to be really neat because it's developing personalized plans for each teacher so that a math teacher doesn't have to go to the science program, you know, if he doesn't- if he's not going to be using it, or, you know, a FIAID teacher doesn't have to learn the math program. So it's more personalized to what they're actually doing, and hopefully it'll create a lot of excitement in the teachers, which transfers to the students. So I really, personally, I like it. And the district will still offer what the required elements are that they have to have for their re-licensure. That was the biggest part of it. And out-of-state opportunities, how they're going to cover the expenses, that was covered there, too. I think we talked about that in policies. But that was pretty much what I got out of it.
Excellent.
Okay.
I concur.
Next was negotiations, and that's me. We are continuing the negotiations and what we had so far. We had the discussions.
And I just will update the board on that, too. I do have an intent to negotiate from the Fair Professionals Group now, and I also have intent to negotiate from Custodian and Food Service. So both those groups are filing their intent. Neither one is necessarily thinking that we need to get meeting urgently. They would like to see what the legislature does and allow the district to be able to kind of finalize a 1920 budget before we really get too serious on it. So just know that they've been filed, and the board members that are on those committees, as we get closer to a first meeting date, I will be emailing and getting information out to you.
Okay. Next is policy. Ever since policy might be on here a couple times.
We're bringing it up later, I guess.
Should we just have that later?
Yep, it's on the agenda, so I think the policy committee can deal with it then.
Schools for equity in education.
Okay. Well, we had a meeting yesterday, and then also last Wednesday, I was down at the State Capitol with Albany, Melrose, Recory. Fridley joined us for a little bit because we met with their legislators. We did meet with Lisa Damuth and with, well, Jeff Howe out in the hallway for a brief conversation. Here's what we get when we talk to a legislator. Education is a priority, but so are transportation and human services. I mentioned I thought we were reaching a point of crisis in education, and I was corrected by Jeff Howe, who said, "No, we are in the midst of a crisis with education, so it's not coming to tier." But they keep emphasizing the pie is only so big. We've got different places, we got to divide it up. So how are we going to go about that? And while everyone agreed there's a crisis, the general impression I got was they're not quite sure how to deal with it at this point. We emphasize that there might be a need for new revenue sources, so that's something that if we're going to move ahead. Now, the governor has proposed 3% and 2%, but that was before some of these budget forecasts keep getting worse each couple of weeks. So we're not sure, but we did emphasize that 3% and 2% would keep us going for two years, would keep us even. That 2% and 2% would result in cuts, and anything less than that would result in drastic cuts. So there's been talk about a 1% sales tax. I thought that was kind of pie in the sky, but it sounds like there's a little bit more talk about that as far as 1% sales tax dedicated to education possibly gaining momentum. There's some concern about special education costs, that those costs keep going up, and we're not getting any more money for it. So basically, what we're doing is drawing money from the general education population. And one of the things that Deb Griffiths kept mentioning at the State Capitol was we don't want to pit general education against special education. It's not that that's- but that's a problem. But there's a problem there that the more we have to pour into one, the less we have in the other. So that was a concern. It was interesting to read the education bill and everything that's in there. They're talking about redoing more things with the tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four, and we just got Pelmsby going, now they're talking about changing things. Who knows where that's going to go? One interesting, I think we do have, Matt and I talked about an opportunity maybe to invite our state representative and our senator to come visit with us sometime and maybe spend a day here. I thought it was interesting that the superintendent from Recory said yesterday that Representative Lisa Damuth comes back every weekend and stays at home, and he's going to meet with her every Monday morning before she goes back. And that she's been on the school board for many years, so she knows what's going on, but even so, he said he sat down with her, I think, yesterday morning, and her eyes were open to, you know, what are the impact, what's the impact going to be to our schools depending upon what the legislature does? So some of the people we talked to down there were somewhat pessimistic, some of them were optimistic, that something's going to get done this year, but we've got a ways to go. And like we talked about in the past, we don't know what the end result's going to be. And it did kind of sound like we might be going to a special session. You got that impression, Matt, that that sounds like another special session, which is going to push everything back. So that's about it. Unless you had something else you want to add from yesterday?
No, and I would just echo what Rick is talking about when we talk about the special education costs. It's referenced as the cross subsidy, and what the cross subsidy is, is really what is it that the dollar amount that districts spend on special education services that aren't covered by special education funding? That difference is called the cross subsidy. And so for us, it's about $700,000 annually is what it is. And the interesting thing about it, and Deb, you know, talks a lot with legislators about not pitting a student group versus another student group, but I think Brad Lundell brings up an interesting point, too, is, and this is true in Painesville, for the vast majority of our students receiving special ed services, they spend time in regular classrooms and in their special ed classroom. And so if our regular ed programming is being impacted by a lack of special education funding, those students are actually impacted twice, when they're in their special ed programming and when they're in the regular ed. And so I think that's another thing that maybe people need to start recognizing, is that it isn't necessarily pitting students against each other, but it's really understanding the overall impact of what funding shortfalls can create. So yeah, I always find the C meetings very informative. Brad and Deb do a fabulous job, and so it's always informative to go and listen and learn from them, and hopefully we'll see what the final budget solution is at the Capitol. Stay tuned. Won't happen until, what, June? No, I'm kidding. May. They'll have it done by May.
Is the crisis thing just a continuing crisis from years? Because other than numbers changing, these discussions we've had before? Or have we have something going on that is all different than what we've experienced in the last, well, as long as I've been on the board?
I think it's a- I think it is a-
Or just a new label.
It's a bank loan. It's compound interest is what it is. I mean, we have a funding mechanism in Minnesota that is very much a mechanism that has been put together and then added to or deleted based on different special interest groups that have voiced concern. And it's like anything that you would use that approach. What was intended when it was initially implemented is not how it's actually living and breathing today. And that's what happens when you just constantly put another solution on top. And so I think that's what it is. It's the compounded effect of consistently, for the last, you know, 85 years, doing that type of a practice. But it also makes it very difficult to just dismantle and start over because the funding mechanism and all the categorical funding that they have has so many complex and intricate details to it that to just say, we're going to, you know, start this all over, and every student is going to be, this amount of dollars are going to be associated with them, that would be very, very difficult. You're going to have some districts that'll be jumping up and down and cheering for that, and you're going to have an equal amount of districts that are going to say, whoa, how do we do this? And so it's- there's not an easy solution. I do not envy any of the education committees, in particular the Finance Committee. They do not have an easy job, but it's important.
Any other questions? Next is school culture and climate.
Yeah, somebody needs to-
So Ashley was there as well. And I wasn't. And you were there, yes, Cheryl was there, like someone else was there. So this was a meeting, there was a mixture of teachers, staff, administration, students, parents, board members, and really the time was just spent talking about the two terms, culture and climate. And really how that was defined was when you look at what climate is, that's like the temperature, the mood, the feeling, it's something that can change rather quickly, whereas culture is like the personality, it's harder to change personalities, the values, really how, you know, is a culture of this school. And so we broke up into work groups and went through activities so we could draw out what our ideal climate would look like, what our ideal culture would look like. And then after that, we talked about whose voices are really missing from the table, and we identified we definitely needed more male students there, male teachers, potentially bringing in some younger students, and we just talked to the different groups of who should be invited to continue these conversations. So it was just kind of an interesting activity to be at the table with, it was really nice to have students at the table, to hear their perspective, which obviously was different than potential parents' perspective, or teachers' or administrators' perspective, and just being able to talk through what it meant. So it was really well done. I think it was really enlightening, and more to come on what this committee will evolve into.
Yeah, and I don't know if the other board members have anything to add, but I think at this point, I would see that this committee will probably meet two or three more times before the end of the school year. And then I think long-term, probably looking at this committee will be active on a quarterly basis is kind of where it's going. But in order to get things up and going and kind of some work to be done, it's going to be a little more labor-intensive on the front end.
It was very interesting, and there was a lot of good conversation, a lot of good discussion about what, how, especially the students perceived climate and culture. And if anybody's interested in coming, they serve food. Worth the trip, anyway.
Okay. Anything else there? Okay. Next is student representatives. So did these two get the minutes, so they're- they have an idea somebody was supposed to speak, or are we surprising them?
No, Jacob.
Okay. Go ahead.
We're done.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Well, just a couple of things I might better share with the board. There's three flag poles out at the baseball stadium, one showing the United States flag, Minnesota flag, and then a Bollard country flag. Well, with the winds in the wintertime and, you know, all year round, they were up since football, they're getting pretty torn, and the Bollard country one, you can't even see it's a fourth of it's still there. And I just ask that we, at least before the first baseball game, or as soon as we can, to get those flags fixed because they are torn, and that's disrespectful to the flag, you know, and looks kind of bad on the school, just the opportunity there, because I try to buy it every day, so I see it, and our neighbors kind of see it, too. Just a thought to have that changed. And then the other thing regarding the block schedule, being that we don't have advisory anymore, which is our 10-minute kind of break time that we have in this normal schedule, during that time, they read the announcements and maybe watch BNC News or something like that. Just from a student standpoint, I think I would suggest that we have our first hour be our advisors, teachers, you know, advisory. And that, you know, you come to school, not everyone's, you know, ready to learn right away at 8:10 or whatever, we start with the block schedule. That way, students and teachers are able to talk, you know, read the daily announcements right away, because I even miss, you know, some of the news, you know, that's at 9 o'clock, 9:00 to 9:15 this time, some of the news, the announcements, and stuff like that. So we could have our first hour teachers be our advisors, and during that time, they can read the announcements or anything out of the day, or whatever they want to talk about, that chance to watch BNC News, they want to show that. And plus, maybe, you know, just for getting into that, help the teachers with that, you know, hour and a half time, they can shave off whatever, 15 minutes or 10 minutes of that time addressing the students with announcements and different news for the day, maybe read the lunch menu and stuff like that. So that's just my suggestion for the block schedule there. And yeah, that's it for me.
Well, it ended on a we're talking. I don't know. Like, I can see that, like, advisor thing, I'd warn off that, but still, like, you don't need it to be extremely long, I don't feel like, because even, like, well, in my advisor, like, we don't start right away, and we still have plenty of time to, like, get through everything. So just, I don't see that as like something that really, really, really needs to happen. Yeah, I don't know. Can I talk about the thing I knew you about, or do you not want me to?
I mean, you could certainly talk about it. I guess I would prefer that you just talk in very general terms about it.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's certainly fine.
Okay. So a group of students went, like, out to eat, I guess, a couple weeks ago, and-
During school?
Yeah. And so there, I know there was some concerns about, and I, like, had a meeting, whatever, but apparently, like, you know, they want to build teacher and, like, student relations with other, so that's fine, but then I feel like something else needs to, like, happen with that because it was very, like, it wasn't supposed to be selective, but it was selective. And yeah, I don't know. I guess there's still some questions.
Can I add to it?
Yeah.
And I guess, here's the thing that, I do think one of the things that's very important is to be able to have staff and student relationship. I think that is whether you want to talk about student achievement, whether you want to talk about culture and climate, you can boil it all away, and what it comes down to is relationships. That's what it ultimately comes down to. And so I do think that's an incredibly important piece in this secondary building or any high school in the state of Minnesota. What I can say is what I appreciate out of Ashley is the way that she approached this and her willingness to advocate, but then also her willingness to identify an issue and be able to go and constructively, have a constructive conversation. It doesn't mean that we all have to agree. It doesn't mean that we have to all be always 100% on the same page, but, you know, Ashley, I appreciate the way that you handled it because I think you approached it the right way. It's easy in today's society to get on Facebook or Twitter or wherever we want and be upset and hit post, hit send, hit all those things. It's not easy to go and engage somebody and have a conversation. So I thank you for bringing it up, and I appreciate that you actually went about it in what I would say was a very dignified and adult manner. I thank you for that.
Anything else?
I guess I just want to respond with, Jake, is it in the budget for us to get some new flags?
Oh, absolutely.
Would the Legion be winning?
I mean, yeah. The flag issue will be taken care of tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the other thing. And on things like that, send me an email. And if you did, Jake, send me an email. And I didn't get back to you, I apologize for that. But on something like that, send me an email. The biggest thing that we have going on here is it's the power of first impression. And so we have something like that happening on our grounds. You're absolutely right. That's not the, that's not the image we want. That's not the message we're sending to our community. So, yeah, something like that, send me a message. Those flags will be taken care of tomorrow.
Legion, I've said it. The American flag is tattered, it's a big deal.
Okay.
Big deal.
I don't know if I count as a committee. I'm the board's legislative liaison and I usually get skipped over for stuff, unfortunately, when this committee time comes. I was at the Capitol yesterday. It was a harrowing time to get there. I eventually got there. Towards the tail end of the speakers. Cut a little bit of the finance, education finance meeting, and then I had some time in the House floor, which was really interesting and productive. You're talking about a special session. I've actually been warned not to be so concerned about that. I mean, legislation is like watching sausage being made. It's not a lot of fun. It's intricate, it's pretty disgusting at some point in time, but I've been cautioned that I think there's a chance that they can get everything done in time. Of course, the pessimist in me always thinks that it'll be a special session anyway, of course. But with the E-12 finance on the House side and the Senate side, there is a really, a pretty significant gap on both sides. Obviously, when you've got Democrat control, the House and the Senate control, there's gonna be that difference. And I hope that they can knock that out in conference committee. I think the deadlines, committee deadlines have already passed, the first deadline. And then they're starting to work on some of that right now.
I think today was the date they had to be out of a finance committee if it's a spending bill.
Yeah, and I think the way the House is structured, the way the bills have to go through, it's a little bit different now. Lyndon Carlson is the chair, the chair of chairs, as I like to call him. Most things have to go through him. Things are going well on that side in the House. It's the Senate where things are gonna get stuck right now. And look within the next four weeks for things to get done. Their adjournment date has to be sometimes toward the middle of May. So beginning of May is when things are gonna be out of committee. I'll be back at the Capitol sometime in April. And I have a meeting with the lieutenant governor. I'm excited about that. So don't lose hope yet. It's a little grim right now, but they assure me. And I don't know if you should always take a politician's word for anything, but that they're gonna really try their hardest to avoid a special session. Thank you.
Okay. We didn't miss anybody else from committees, I don't expect. So old business, district goals. Matt, I'm gonna just turn to you.
Yep, I just wanted to talk about one item. It'll be really brief. I had a excellent meeting the last couple of weeks now. I've had a couple of them with a gentleman by the name of Jerry Sparby. Some of you might remember Jerry. He was a elementary principal, I believe, in Recory and Get Cold Spring Elementary for a time. But he has, he has retired. And in his retirement, he is starting an organization called the Yes Network. And the Yes Network is very active right now in St. Cloud, Sauk Rapids, and Sartell. And they're expanding. Last summer, they were also in Richmond. And the whole premise of this Yes Network is developing healthy kids. And it starts with healthy communities. And so they've really looked at the direction of getting kind of the kids in the neighborhoods, back into the neighborhood, community parks and stuff. And so the way he's approaching this is, he is going and training high school students. Juniors and seniors are what, and some sophomores as well. But he's really focusing on that population and giving them mentorship training and leadership training. And then those high school students actually work for the Yes Network during the summer and help with this kind of facilitated community involvement. So he's been out. We've been talking pretty regularly. And I think there is a tremendous opportunity that we have with what he is trying to do. It's exciting to hear someone else talk about the idea of education as more than academic standards, or how we did on an ACT, or what college we got into. And so he, I think, is on to something. We're gonna keep meeting. Today, Matt Dickhausen joined the conversation. I think there's gonna be some things moving forward with it. But I think it's an opportunity for us to be able to expand some after-school programming and potential summer programming that would really be dynamic stuff that I think kids would want to be a part of. We'd be able to use not only our outdoor space, but also our maker space and a whole bunch of other things. So more to come on that. But it's really interesting to see what he's trying to do. And I hope that Paynesville can be a part of it as it moves forward. So that's what I have for district goals.
Okay. Then we'll move to new business. The St. Cloud State University TNE contract. And so, Matt, maybe I just...
Yep, so just a summary on this contract. It is a five-year agreement. The value of the contract or the cost of the contract is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. I did submit a grant to the Paynesville Area Community Foundation for this contract, and they graciously have approved that grant. So the contract would be paid with grant funds. What this would provide us is the traveling St. Cloud State equipment trailer. So it would have things like laser engravers, it would have plasma cutter, some CNC mills, would have some 3D printing machines. They would have a high-end architectural 3D printer, virtual welder, a whole host of equipment. But what I'm most excited about is it also includes free staff development on St. Cloud State's campus for teachers in the summer. So if we are a member of this and are wanting to, teachers can go down to St. Cloud State. They offer mini-courses. So usually the courses are four days long. And they happen on campus. And the intent is to get twenty educators in a cohort. They're working on a variety of mostly career and tech trades. But then the plan is everybody produces kind of a two-week unit with a particular piece of equipment. You walk out of there as an instructor with forty weeks of plans that you could take back to your district and implement in your classroom on the first day of school. So we've talked about this with teachers. There's already teachers that have indicated, yes, they are going. Once the board approves this, the next thing I want to do is figure out exactly what we can put together to compensate any of our teachers that are going to go and spend the week down at St. Cloud State. Obviously, if a teacher wanted to, they could get St. Cloud State credits for them. Apply them to the salary schedule if they want. Those credits are at the cost of the teacher, because then we would have them apply them to the salary schedule and stuff. So very exciting. And again, the Community Foundation is the one who is really stepping up to make this a go. So I'm hoping, and I would recommend its approval.
Another benefit is that you can get the equipment at a reduced cost.
Thank you, yeah. So that's the other thing, is when they go to update the equipment in these trailers, the first thing they do is contact their members and see if their members would like to purchase the used equipment that's currently in the trailer. It's usually about a forty to fifty percent discount versus just buying it off the market. So that is a pretty attractive feature as well.
My impression is, we have the ability, once we get this rolling and the students know what this can do, that the students can do all their stuff in advance. We don't necessarily need the trailer here. The trailer would be performing what they did. Am I on the right track here? So we get a lot more training then. This is our ability to make sure the project, but they're gonna be open.
And I'm glad you bring that up, because it's not, in order for us to be making headway on whether it's bringing more CTE skills into our curriculum, it doesn't necessarily mean that you need to have this equipment on-site all the time. A lot of what goes on is, a lot of the work is design work. The actual use of sending a final project to a piece of equipment, that is the culmination of a whole bunch of other work. So, yeah, teachers have the ability to be able to work on a certain unit of instruction. And they may work on it for five, six, seven class periods. And then the trailer shows up and that's when they would actually produce or send their their end product to a piece of equipment.
I think it's fantastic. I think the reason why we approve the contract as presented. I have a motion from myself. We have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no? Carried. Now we are down on the School Perceptions contract.
So School Perceptions is the, is the survey company that we are going to be working with. The contract is somewhere in the neighborhood of about, I think, ten thousand dollars or so. And when it's all said and done, it's gonna be probably closer to twelve. The one thing that we do have is there will be a postage bill that'll be associated with this. That's obviously not part of this, because they need to know exactly how my surveys are going out. But that postage bill would be included as well. My recommendation is for approval. I have another conference call with this outfit tomorrow. And we're going to, excuse me, Thursday's my conference call. And we will work on about the fifth iteration of this survey, which the plan is by Friday to have the survey complete. I've gotten lots of good feedback on the survey. Some of it asking, you know, do we need the survey open for that long of a period? Do we want to condense that a little bit? There's some other technical feedback as far as wording and language and stuff. So that's all stuff that I'll review with them tomorrow on Thursday as our conference call and then go from there. But it'd be my recommendation that you approve the contract as presented.
I'll make a recommendation to approve the contract.
We have a motion from Thomas. We have a second from Rick. Any further discussion? I have just one item. And when would it hit people's postbox?
That's a good question.
Because if you're wanting people to know if it's gonna hit by next Wednesday, or...
No, so if it gets approved on the twenty-ninth, they're looking at, the arrival for the survey would be either April fourth or April fifth.
Okay.
So, and that's one of the things that I want to just get finalized too, so we can get things in the newspapers. So we can get the word out that this stuff is...
Perfect, and he'll let us know.
Yeah, and so you're gonna, you're gonna see a variety of these. I just really, we need to just get to a final survey so we can have all those details ironed out. And then if you get there, if you see, for instance, Mr. Hewitt's email weekly, you're gonna see reminders in there. Mr. Orline's communications that he sends out multiple times a month, you'd see communication in there. You'll see stuff in the press. There's gonna be a variety of places, but the word will certainly be out.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? Carried. Okay, then we are on the calendar. So we got the two thousand nineteen, twenty calendar and the two thousand twenty, twenty-one calendar. Matt, I'm gonna turn it back to you, because I saw you had some of those workdays for staff in there.
Yep. So just to kind of go through the calendar, there's a few changes that are being suggested here. August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, in the past, there's been three days of workshop in August. The nineteen-twenty calendar has two into it. Parent-teacher conferences are different. In the past, there's been a full school day. And then the evening was a parent-teacher conference. And then a portion of the next day was also a parent-teacher conference. This would just have parent-teacher conferences twice a year, fall and spring. But it would be just an eight-hour day. And rather than a seven forty-five to three forty-five day, those would be a noon to eight PM day is how the parent-teacher conferences would work. There are a couple of days built in here with some flexible professional development days. Again, those are things that we're continuing to work on. I don't necessarily see this calendar contingent upon personalized professional development like we're talking. The last, well, this year, all the faculty members were completing a flexible professional development day. So this is not something new. This is something they've done before. This would just be an expansion of that. If the faculty wants to continue the conversation about personalized professional development and move forward with that, I would be one hundred percent on board. I think it is absolutely relevant to people. And I think it is the way to make things meaningful to each and every one of them. So we'll see on that. Commencement on here is May thirty-one. And then the last student day is June third with the last staff day, June fourth. Same number of student contact days, one hundred and seventy-one. Same number of faculty days, one eighty-four. The concept here really is sprinkling in professional development days throughout the year. So you'll see a green day in just about every month. And I think that's an important component of professional development. It needs to be ongoing and regular. And the other thing is, if we do move to personalized professional development, we want to have days where our teachers don't have to be with kids if they want to go out and see other schools, other places, network with colleagues and stuff like that. And it's hard to do that if everybody, you know, uses, for instance, I use President's Day as an example. A lot of schools in the state have President's Day as a no-school day, but it's a professional development day. Well, that's all well and good, but that doesn't necessarily promote a lot of ability to go see different approaches or newer or different things if those schools aren't gonna be in session either. So the the twenty-twenty-one calendar gets a little tricky just because Labor Day becomes September seventh. And so that one is, it's gonna remain in a draft mode. You would not be approving a twenty-twenty-one calendar. It would just stay in a draft mode, but this is where we would pick up the conversation next time this year. This year, next time? Next time this year? Next year, this time. Got it. Yeah, say that five times fast. So it's always gonna stay in a draft mode. The thing that is interesting, I know there are already multiple bills at the legislature talking about the twenty-twenty-one school start date. I've heard that schools could start as early as the thirty-first of August. And I've heard that they could start as early as the twenty-seventh of August. So I'm assuming that due to September seventh being Labor Day, I'm assuming there will be some flexibility. So even when we approve a calendar, what you would be approving would be the nineteen-twenty calendar. The twenty-twenty-one would remain in draft mode. You would not be approving that.
I'm always wary of starting school earlier, because then you mess with the four-H kids and their programs at the state fair and things like that. It's just always kind of concerning to me. I don't know. I'm probably the only one that maybe here cares. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's certainly a contingency of keeping that start date after Labor Day. You know, obviously, the tourism industry certainly wants, the state fair wants, that start date after Labor Day. So, yeah, there's certainly a contingency of people that feel that that's important. In the grand scheme of things, anyone can sit down and do this calendar? Honestly, I'm here to tell you, start after Labor Day and put one hundred and eighty-four days and one hundred and seventy-one student contact days and tell me where you get. You're gonna get to the same spot, June second or third, fourth or fifth. So is there a big difference between going to school on June first or June fifth? I don't know. You gotta have a last day of school at some point. And the one thing I know about the last day of school, nobody wants to come to it and everyone thinks it's meaningless. But if you keep moving it up, it's still the last day of school that nobody wants to come to, and it's still meaningless. So I don't have a solution for it.
I don't mean to be critical of the calendar in any way. I'm just saying I'm always wary, because there's these four-H kids that, and it's a very important part of their education. I mean, we are a very rural district. We have a lot of foreign kids and it's very important to them. And I'm always very wary, because those kids shouldn't get the shaft. I mean, it's not fair. But again, it's really hard to balance it. I mean, it's almost impossible when Labor Day comes this late. It's an impossible task for anybody.
I just, I guess the other side of that, Jacob, to me is, a lot of kids are taken out of school in the middle of winter to go to wherever in the world with their parents and they're missing school then. Parents take their kids out of school for all kinds of reasons. And I think we look at the whole population and I say, well, a few kids might be hurt by this. Well, a lot of kids are taken off anyway, other times of the year. And we give them that break. I personally, I just hate for the state to tell us when we have to start school. I think that's a local decision we should be able to make, and I've always been. And I grew up in a time when we always started before Labor Day. For years, Minnesota started before Labor Day. We got by with it, but...
So this is not an action item. It's just information. It's for you to take a look at. And the calendar will come back in April, and I will be recommending approval. And the calendar will come back in April, and I will be recommending approval. There might be some modifications, but I think what you're looking at is the skeleton, what the calendar's gonna be. There might be a few technical changes here or there, but this is kind of where things are moving. Questions?
Okay. We'll be on to the next one. 2019-2020 budget information.
So I have, and this is not extensive. You can stay in your places and stuff. But I do have a sheet at your place. I just wanted to update the board kind of where things are at with long-term facility maintenance and capital dollars. Again, this is not a final in any way, shape, or form. But what I just want to show is, these are all of the things that are on the list of things to potentially be looking at. Please don't read into any of them because it's on the list. It doesn't mean that I would prioritize it in a place that it would get done right away. But that being said, it is something that is on the list and has had some discussion about it. There are a couple of things I just want to point out. First of all, the middle school media center, the first yellow item, that going from media center to innovation center. We do have $32,000 budgeted for that. That would all come out of long-term facility maintenance. That is probably going to be a go. We're just waiting for the last couple of pieces or scope of work to come back with some proposals. And that one certainly is probably, is something that would be a priority. If we can get that to all fit in that $32,000 number, which I think it's looking very likely that it will, that work actually probably may start in May is where we might end up with that. So...
This will include the Makerspace?
Yeah, so that's in this building. And what it would be doing is taking in, it would be an expansion of the Makerspace.
Okay. Ventilation, you're going to put in fans and whatnot over the Makerspace?
No. So what we're hoping to do is be able to get some additional equipment, like a laser engraver, as an example. They do make units that are not, that don't need to be vented. I think when you look at the, when you do some reading on it, I think the ideal is to have a vented unit. And so we would actually have a laser engraver that would have a direct vent to the outside so that exhaust that is created from that engraver would actually be pumped right out of the building.
Would you include some of the existing items that are in there in the ventilation to carry dust and whatnot?
You know, we haven't had a conversation about dust collection. I think that is certainly something that would be open to conversation in the future, but it's not something that we've talked about up to this point. What we've really been talking about is, you know, if you go in the direction of laser engraver, plasma cutter, those things, those that we need, the requirement is ventilation, and that's what that is referencing there.
I'm just thinking, if they're going to put in a ventilation system, it might be the time to check into those items also at the same time, rather than a tack on later.
Sure. And what I'm, I mean, what we're talking about with the laser engraver is, it's probably a unit that's probably, I don't know, probably maybe four feet wide and two feet deep. So most of them that I have seen have just an individual ventilation kit that goes from that unit to the outside. I don't know that we would be in a situation where we would have like a row of equipment that would all need ventilation. We would probably be talking about two or three units. So, I mean, we can certainly look into it and stuff, but it's, I'm not sure we'll get to that scope. The roof repairs, the next item that is yellow there, that is out for bid right now. I forget the bid opening date on that, but that is out there. I think that 260 number is gonna be a good number, but we won't know that until bids open. The reality is, is we have leaks in our roof, so we don't have the option to say, you know, well, the bid's too high. We aren't gonna do this. A lot of this is gonna be contingent on what stuff like that comes back as because the roof repair has to happen. I mean, you can't have a cafeteria that is leaking water. It just, it's not functional. So... So that one will be a biggie. Smartboard replacement cycle. Just want to make the board aware of this. The smartboards that are in almost all the classrooms are close to the first-generation smartboards, and so they're reaching the end of their life expectancy. We're talking about a replacement plan, so really, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. Number one, I think the first question is, how many teachers that have a smartboard are using the interactive features of a smartboard? Those teachers then should have a smart panel in their room as a replacement. If a teacher isn't using the interactive components of a smartboard, then I think what's on the wall behind you is a far better solution for that instructor, and it's a much more cost-efficient solution for that instructor. So that's just something that is on the immediate horizon. I do believe that a lot of our smartboards are gonna start having hiccups. And so we need to just get moving on a replacement. Once we get a replacement plan in place, then the next question's gonna be, you're probably gonna want to have probably a five or a six-year replacement cycle. So you'd have to be budgeting dollars to be able to replace, say, 20% of your inventory on a given year.
How much does an individual smartboard cost? Just curious. I mean, rough estimate, you know?
Yep. So it's interesting because the old model was a board and then a projector. And by the time you got both of those, you were in that $35,000 to $4,000 number, which it's interesting. You would think with the advancement in technology and, you know, the more efficiency with processors and chips and all that stuff, that they would come down. But the new smart panels, which now are essentially a self-contained computer, there's no projector anymore, but those are about $4,000 too. So we really haven't seen the market actually come down on those. I know there are a lot of districts that we're really hoping that, and I'm just talking if you stay with smart. There are some competitors to smart that are less than that. But we were really hoping there would be some, along with others, we're thinking that as the technology evolved, we would actually see a little price sag in those, and that's not happening. That being said, you know, you could put a monitor like what's behind you on the wall for probably around $1,200. So... I think it's really important to actually evaluate what the instructor's using it for. And if they're using the interaction, great. They should be getting a smart panel. But if they're not using the interaction, then let's go with the monitor and have it serve its purpose. The high school basement, so the secondary school basement, we're still trying to brainstorm some solutions to that. The flooring needs to be addressed eventually and stuff to get a quote on an epoxy floor for down there, and that's what you're looking at on this spreadsheet. I don't know necessarily that we have a solid plan yet. And so it's not, obviously, if it's not something that's a solid plan, it's probably not gonna be prioritized right now. But just know that that's on the radar, needs to be budgeted for. And then the last one on the front page is the high school health and safety dollars. Those, that $22,000, that's gonna be in there every year. Those are things that need to stay. Second page then has the boiler and domestic hot water. That's still an issue that's ongoing. The original stuff that I looked at was looking around $390,000 for boiler replacement and domestic hot water replacement. And I think the last time I chatted with the people I've been working with, they were down in the 320 range. So we're gonna just keep working on it and see if we can get it to a place where it's manageable and we can potentially look at moving forward with that. So we'll see where that final number comes in, and then we can look at what the return on investment on something like that is as well. So that's just kind of in a nutshell where things are at. Again, they're not, they are not in any priority rank or anything. So just, it's more for your information. You will see this stuff again as we continue in particularly May and June to finalize a budget. Questions at all?
I noticed there are some upgrades for the baseball stadium again.
Yes, there is.
What are we doing with the camera system for the baseball stadium?
Well, I think the ideal would be to have a camera system that would be up in the main, on the main floor by the concessions and where those press box rooms are, whatever you want to call those side rooms. I think that would be ideal. I think there would also be some value in having a camera system on those entrances as well.
This is a security system?
Well, it's a camera system, yeah. I mean...
Well, it's security cameras. I mean, not...
Yeah.
Not for broadcasting?
No, no, no. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's not for broadcasting at all. It's to monitor, to...
Right. That's what I'm doing.
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
What is a baseball stadium key fob?
So that would be transitioning the stadium to the same type of a key system that we have here. So the outdoor, any of the exit doors have the black fob box, and then you use your key fob rather than a key. That would be, again, that would be an ideal situation because then we actually have a way to track who's coming and going. And when things aren't taken care of like they are or supposed to be, we have a way to hold people accountable to that. And if people on a repeated basis refuse to live up to what our expectations are for that facility, we just turn their key fob off and they can't enter the building.
Okay. So we control that?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. And it was a very similar system to what we have at both the elementary and secondary. It's just, given the number of boxes that we already have in our current buildings, it would be a separate system, but it would still be tied into our existing system. Donnie would still be the one who would issue a fob or whatever. And if we need him to turn a fob off, he would be the one who would turn that off. Any other questions?
I just have a question. And I know this budget is in flux and things move in and out of it. I believe at one point the locker rooms were on this. Has that moved up to this year or another year?
I think locker rooms are on this year yet.
They are on this year? Okay.
I don't know. Let me check on that, Maggie, and I can get back to you on that one, okay? Any other questions?
Okay. No more questions, then we're gonna move on. Policy review, first readings. So just to turn it over to somebody from...
I can talk, I guess. So, yeah, we met last week, Monday, reviewed the policies, 417, 418, 419, 420, 427, and strangely, 529. We'll get to that. If anybody had a chance to read the policies, we were suggesting no changes to policy 417. Everything seemed to fit. MSBA policy, mono policy is what we kind of have in places already. 418, we have a few changes that we noted to adopt close to the MSBA or what the MSBA policy is, and that is their addition to medical cannabis. So that is, they're adding medical cannabis as an exclusion in the policy. It is not recognized for use on school grounds, nor does the policy grant permission for possession. So obviously, with the change in times with the advancement of medical cannabis as a medical possession, it's not something that's currently being allowed on school property regardless of physician's notes or anything else. That's how MSBA currently has it listed and how we intend to have it listed as well. As we discussed, there may be a future change in that, but currently, we're just gonna, we recommend to kind of follow along with MSBA on that. And then, of course, along with that, we, they're adding the medical cannabis definition. And let's see here, we're adding paragraph D, the final section, says a copy of this policy will be available in principal's office. That wasn't, I believe, wasn't previously on this policy 418, but just noting kind of a similar thing to other policies, that it's available in the principal's office and on the website and everything else. So... Policy 419, we are looking at a few changes there as well.
What is this policy?
Policy 419...
Drug-free environment?
Yeah. To the tobacco, drug-free. What we are looking at is removing the first sentence, keeping the second sentence of, in the general statement policy. Basically, it was kind of a tricky thing, I guess. We are keeping the second sentence that basically states that we are not going to, let's see if I can find that, sorry. Yep. So originally, it said the school district will not solicit or accept contributions, gifts, money, curriculum materials, or equipment from companies directly, manufacturer, and are identified with tobacco products, devices, electronic cigarettes. The school district will not promote, allow promotion of tobacco products or e-cigarettes on school property or at school-sponsored events. So we're looking at taking that first sentence out. It just kind of gets tricky sometimes. Matt, you have a better example of it?
I think there's a real gray area with that. And so the group's decision was to keep the sentence that says, "The school district will not promote or allow promotion of tobacco products or e-cigarettes on school property or at school-sponsored events." Where it gets a little bit gray, for instance, Minnesota's a prime example of this. How many years ago, the attorney general sued Big Tobacco, and they got a billion-dollar settlement. A portion of that settlement was used to produce educational smoking cessation material. Well, the question, I think it's a gray area, is that tobacco dollars that are being used for curricular things that could have a positive impact in our classroom? I think it's open to question. And so I think the idea that, to say that we would universally not use any curricular things or anything like that, I think that's a stretch. I think you look at the vaping epidemic that we are currently experiencing. I could very easily see something coming where there could be a potential that maybe there is a curricular benefit in using something like that. So the group, the committee had basically decided, yes, the district's not going to promote or allow promotion of tobacco products, but if there is a message that could be linked back to tobacco dollars for smoking cessation, and they produce quality curricular materials, we would still like to be able to use those. And so that's why that first statement would be eliminated from the policy.
So then, adopting within the MSBA policy, we're expanding the definition of tobacco-related device. Once again, with the vaping epidemic with everything that's going on, with the change of the use of tobacco, they just expanded the definition to include, you know, more of that kind of things. And then same thing, they expanded on the definition of smoking. So both of those two. Policy 420, recommending no changes to, everything seemed in line with that. 427, a few changes as well. The, let's see, the teacher definition, Matt, you might be able to explain that one better than I will as well, but looking to make that change to that special education.
Yeah. So this, the old policy referenced the Board of Teaching. The Board of Teaching is now disbanded, and now it's the Professional Educators Licensing Something Board. I'm missing the S, but Standards Board. And so just inserting Pelsby in place of Board of Teaching. The second piece is a little bit more nuanced. So in item A, we're actually rewording some things. And so we're gonna have it say, "Workload limits for special education teachers shall be determined by the superintendent in consultation with the building principal and special education administrator." The logic for that is, is Painesville Area Schools does not employ a special education administrator. We have a special education administrator because we're a member of the West Central Education District. That's where we get that service. I am very, I have strong feelings that I don't think the board should be putting something in place and giving authority to a person that is not under their employment. So the board wants to hold the superintendent responsible for this policy, not a special education administrator that you don't even employ. And so that's where we just put the wording around. If we were a district with 5,000 kids and we had our own full-time special education director, the MSBA boilerplate policy would work just fine. um, policy would work just fine. But since we're not, and we have a different arrangement, I think it would be best for the policy to be written this way.
And we, we talked about that, obviously, and, and kinda agreed to that point, that, that holding her, or that, uh, special education administrator from West Central Education doesn't seem like that should be the first go-to. So, and then, um, we're gonna recommend that, uh, we adopt the MSBA policy, mono policy for policy 529, but we will fully review policy 529 when it, we get to the 500 cycle.
I can explain that. So in, in doing this whole policy review, um, we actually have a mysterious policy titled Policy 440. The policy's name is Policy for Staff Notification of Violent Behaviors by Students. This policy was in the hard copy of our policy manual, but there was never a date that the board approved it. Um, I can't seem to find, and enlisted Linda's help, we can't seem to find a, a date that the board approved it. So in doing a little more research, um, I couldn't even find a policy 440 from MSBA, so I was, I was confused for a while. But then it occurred to me, this is actually a student policy, and so it was a 500 policy, and lo and behold, there was 529. So what the policy committee would like to do is, they would like the board to approve the, um, MSBA recommended policy 529 for staff notification of violent behaviors by students, and then slide 529 into the 500 series, set it into one of, uh, the, the cycle when the 500 series come up. So their recommendation would be approve it as written by MSBA, we'll get it slated in with the 500 series, and most likely, you'll see this one again next year, is how it will work.
Were there any significant differences between 440 and 5, this 529?
No, in fact, there's been nothing that has changed in that policy since it was originally out. I forget the date. Uh, hold on, I can...
2003.
Was it '03?
That's when it said, it required committee, uh... Or the original was 1999, sorry. Revised in 2016.
So no, I, I think it's a good plan to just, uh, approve 529 as is, according to MSBA, and then we can get it in the, the, um, review cycle and, and go from there. So this would be first reading. Um, most of these changes, I would classify these as technical in nature. I don't think there's anything in here that you are, um, changing in such a dramatic way that it would impact either, you know, day-to-day practice or anything like that. Uh, my recommendation would be to approve the first reading of these policies. We will post them in the district office. If people have questions or concerns, they can come check them out, and I'll bring them back in April and let you know if there are any concerns that have been brought forth regarding the first reading.
And then they just, our policy, and we don't have to vote? Is that what you're saying?
Nope.
Back to vote a second time?
Yep, you'll approve these for first reading now. We'll post them. I'll bring them back in April, and you're gonna approve them for a second reading, and then they will go and be posted online and, in our handbooks and all that stuff. They will become the new policies.
So do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Cheryl?
Second.
A second from Rick. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Carried. So, um, explain to me what, uh, nope, we got it. Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. Okay, so now we're on, our review upcoming meetings, information, and I'll leave that to you, Matt.
Yeah, this is just what I have on my calendar. If people have other things, I just wanna kinda get them out there so that we're all on the same page. April 2nd, West Central Ed Board Meeting, uh, that'll happen at Albany Schools. I believe it's in the boardroom, Maggie is, is where they're at. Um, April 9th will be our work and learn session, 6:00 PM will be in the middle school media center. Uh, April 10, we have teacher negotiations scheduled, that will be in the middle school media center as well. Uh, the 15th of April, that's our next policy committee meeting, that'll be the last one for the year. Um, so we will meet, uh, in my office at 6:00 PM on the 15th, and then we'll be back here April 23rd for the regular business meeting. Um, so April's a little lighter than March was. That's what we got.
Don't we have three hours meeting tomorrow?
Oh, thank you.
1:00?
1:00. Yes. Sterns County Family Services Coalition is tomorrow, 1:00.
I just have one thing. So at the end of our meeting last time, we kinda went right to the end, it had to be out at 6:00. We really didn't get a chance to talk about topics for the next work session. Should, if members have an issue, just let you know what they might be, because when we, we come up with the ideas, we're not voting on them or anything anyway. But...
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm, I don't necessarily view that time at the end of a work session as, as really talking about topics for the next work session. I kinda see it more as just a place for the board to touch base if there are constituent concerns or things that, um, people are, are voicing concerns, to be able to bring those up. Um, I think concerns that might be negative are always, um, appropriate, and we can talk about those. I also think it's good to also talk about the positive things. And I think that's one of the things that maybe as a, um, public school, we don't do enough of. So that, I think is a, a piece that is a part of that. Um, and then what I've kind of just been working under the premise is, work session is always prepping the board for what's gonna happen at the business meeting. And so that will kinda continue to unfold. Um, I guarantee the budget will be back, um, at the work session, and, um, I have, I think, two other things on my board in my office, but I'm, I'm forgetting those at this point, but...
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move the board to now adjourn.
I have a motion from Jacob to adjourn.
Second.
And I have a second from Maggie. Any further discussion?
Beat you, Rick.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All post say no. Carried.